Good evening. Welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the City of Aspen City Council Work Session for June 12, 2023. Tonight on our agenda, we have a couple of items. We have a demolition allotment application process discussion, APCHA Essential Home Repair Pilot Grant Program, and a discussion of draft goals from City Council. We'll get into it with item number one. Ben?
Mr. Mayor, Council, for the record, on your own community development. Here to talk about a topic that previous council asked us to come back to you with a discussion, a work session discussion back in December. We're having the discussion now because we would like some direction so that ComDev staff per council direction can put in place any potential changes that we might need to make ahead of the 2024 allotment availability. I know that this is a topic with a lot of interests, both from council and from the community. And certainly, staff is willing to answer any questions about the demo allotment program as you see fit this evening. But our intention of the conversation is fairly narrow and really talking about the demo application process and some improvements that I think both staff and council would like to see to how we take these applications in on an annual basis. So, let's see if this will skip ahead. There we go. So, just to give a little bit of background, per council's response to the moratorium ordinance 13 of 2022, we made six yearly demolition allotments available. The application period opens the first business day in January. ComDev staff puts forward a pre-application, which is a document that we put forward for any land use application that gives out an applicant information about the process that they'll be going through and what they need to submit for an application. We did a custom pre-application for the demolition allotment in 2022. I'll talk more specifically about the 2022 process in just a second. And currently, per the land use code and per ordinance 13, this is a discussion that we had with council as ordinance 13 was going, you know, through the process. But currently, and per that discussion with council, we landed on first come, first served basis for complete applications in terms of the issuance of allotments. Our first experience with this was shortly after the moratorium ordinances came into effect and we made the 2022 development allotments available. We drafted a pre-application that provided that described the application process, a number that was in lines with what staff anticipated at the time. We received 13 applications for these development allotments. What we did not anticipate was a representative for several of the properties that were pursuing a demolition allotment sent 400 distinct applications via email. They raised, to be honest, quite a degree of uncertainty with staff and how to handle the way that these applications were submitted, both in how they responded to the pre-application criteria, but also our common development procedures and how we take land use cases in. After some time, and to be honest, with some uncertainty, it was kind of an unprecedented situation for us. After our review, we looked at the application process, did a lot of research into how these applications were submitted, when. We looked at the land use code. And as a consequence of that analysis, we awarded six allotments, and six of the projects were denied. Those six projects appealed. One of the 13 applications was not included for consideration for other reasons. But as a consequence of that appeal, council awarded the denied projects multi-year allotments from the 2023 allotment period in a settlement of the field and provided direction during that process to improve our application process. I think staff and council both were, I think, both aware that the process could be improved to put some additional guardrails or to come up with a fundamentally different process. As staff kind of heard council direction as we've looked at the issues, we've talked to the city attorney's office, we see three potential responses. One, we could maintain the status quo. We could update our pre-application, which was included as an exhibit in your packet, to provide additional direction and try to take away some of the uncertainty that was certainly present in 2022 as we received the applications in the way that we did. There would be no code amendment necessary to do that, and we could work with our city attorney's office to try to craft pre-application summaries that were even more definitive in the way that they described the process. The second option is to create a lottery system with an open application window, say, a month. And then, within that month, complete applications would be entered into a lottery and allotments would, you know, that were more than six. If there were applications more than six, we would use the lottery system based on chance to select the six projects that received a development allotment. This would be a simple code amendment that we could do relatively quickly without a lot of staff energy or time. During that conversation, and I think during the conversation we were going through ordinance 13, there was also some suggestion from a couple of members of council at least that we should contemplate a competitive system for the allotments based on applicable criteria. And as I talked a little bit about in the memo, this used to be the norm for all of our development allotments, that whether you're going after an allotment for commercial or lodge or residential units. 20 years ago, the competition system was the norm, and it went away. And I think there's some reasons why it went away. I think the, you know, the way that the criteria were evaluated was seen as overly subjective. I think there was uncertainty as you were bringing a project forward. You had to do a bunch of design work, you know, to try to convince the review board that you were eligible for a or that you should be awarded an allotment. And so, you know, during the sort of final stages of reviewing ordinance 13, we did talk to members of the development community. And, you know, they recommended to us that they were not, if we were going to do the development allotment program, they were certainly not supportive of the competitive system just because it added additional uncertainty to the process. So, but I do think that that was, I wanted to bring that forward because a couple of council members at least raised some interest in that. Certainly, we could implement that as well. But I will just say that that's a much more complex code amendment, thinking about the review criteria that we might sort of evaluate projects in a competitive system of some sort. And certainly, you know, those are the three that are, I think, most obvious to staff. But certainly, if council has other ideas, we can certainly talk about them and evaluate them. But we would like some direction this evening from council so that we might do what is necessary before the 2024 allotments would be available with the code change sometime a little bit later this year. Happy to take any questions and engage in any discussion that you'd like to have.
Thanks, Ben. I'll start with just a question for clarification. We currently in our demo permitting require a certain percentage of diversion, I believe. What is that percentage? Is it 25%?
30%.
30%?
Yeah. At the time, I think it was 5% higher than the county was at. And I think they're upping their rates. I think we're both kind of in this path of seeing what's reasonable and feasible for one project to the next.
And I ask that because a primary interest and priority for me in this is that environmental consideration, impacts to the landfill and the like. So, I'm gonna wonder if there's opportunity for more diversion and how that would play into kind of some of my comments around an improved demo permitting.
I think along with the allotments, where projects that receive these allotments had a series of conditions that were, that went along with those, with the issuance of a development allotment. One was around waste diversion. One was about some reporting of embodied energy in projects. Certainly, at the time, it was prior to our new energy codes that have since been passed that apply to all development. But I do think that there are, you know, inherent already in the process, built into the process, where some enhanced reporting and performance standards for these projects that received a development allotment. Now, if, again, we could, you know, there's a couple paths towards that. Certainly, we could create a competition system where, you know, one project needed to sort of up another project to be issued one of these. I think that was the intention of the competition system going back. Or we could make those standards that apply to all of these more rigorous over time. So, I think there's a couple paths towards that outcome that would be possible.
And then, the only other comment I have at this time is another consideration for me is age of properties that we're talking about. So, just from the initial slide that you put up in front there, I hate to say it, but I'm probably somewhat supportive of the most difficult path that you outlined there. And we'll talk more as we go, but questions?
No questions, just comments.
Tom?
Just a quick question. If we stuck with the first come, first served option, I'd like to think that what happened last time could be prevented?
I think so. I mean, I think it was, we had projects that applied as they were directed that came in as we anticipated, that followed the requirements in land use code. And I do think that the first come, first served because of the demand. These are very valuable things. There, you know, there's more demand than there is supply for these allotments. I do think that there is some argument towards a lottery system or towards a competitive system that takes away that.
Edge.
Well, the, I've got to have this in it, 8/30 and 5/100 of a second. I mean, I think that that, with the way that those applications come in electronically, you know, I do think that that's a topic to be managed that we might need to give some more thought to around how to sort of best manage that. And I do think that that's an advantage of the lottery system where that immediate, by the second, time pressure isn't part of the process. It seems a little, I think cumbersome and difficult to manage from the applicant perspective. And, you know, again, also, depending on how quick your server is or how quick your internet connection, you've got an advantage over or disadvantage from one of the other applicants. So, I acknowledge all that. I do think that that's the one disadvantage of the first come, first served dealing with electronic submissions for something where there's more, there's more demand than supply. And so, I do think that that's an advantage of the lottery system as it takes away that, you know, literally split second. I mean, it came down to us evaluating, you know, portions of a second of when applications hit our server.
Thanks. You've actually answered my second question, so, awesome.
Questions at this time?
Yeah. Can you speak to the need of the permits that were submitted, those 13 permits? Do they talk about in the application process why they wanted a demolition permit? Whether it be like age of infrastructure versus? And what I guess I'm getting at here is, if you're going towards like the competitive system, is the competition generally from the need side of things? Or from, I'm gonna make improvements to make it more energy efficient or I'm gonna do waste diversion sort of side of things?
I could only speak, you know, I could speak broadly. I could speak about specific projects. I think the applications that were issued from this 2022 process, so let's say 12 projects that have been issued. I also say the projects we've received applications this year that you folks will be hearing about next week, you know, I think they're all slightly different. Some of them are homes that were built in the 60s and 70s that are still functioning homes, but might not have been built so well. Some of them were built in the 80s and 90s and have aspects of them that are out of style. Some of them are on larger properties that, you know, the existing home has additional development right that hasn't been used. And they, you know, to sort of take the development right on the property to its most, to its maximum, that it doesn't make sense to do a significant addition to the existing home for a variety of reasons. You know, I do think that, you know, other things that we did during ordinance 13, to your point, we did try to get in the way of people who were making energy improvement, energy efficiency improvements to existing homes. We did some things like that. But, you know, I would say, most of the homes that we're seeing pursue these were built in the 60s, 70s, and 80s of varying degrees of quality, of varying sizes. And I, you know, I do think that one of the reasons why council pursued this as one of the major outcomes of ordinance 13 is that these homes, when they are redeveloped, are transformed into something fundamentally different. And, you know, so I guess that's how I would respond generally to that other than to talk about specific projects.
And on the same note, does Picken County have a demolition permit allotment system?
Not to my knowledge.
No? Do other communities that you know about have a demolition permit allotment system?
There are communities that have tried to discourage it with different incentives and prohibitions. But to my knowledge, well, I think one is that we have a growth management allotment system. You know, there's, we're not in the majority in that circumstance looking nationally. And I think certainly using that system towards this, towards this issue within our development context was a fairly novel approach.
That makes sense. And what would the lottery system look like? It's not picking names out of a hat. What was it actually?
Well, I mean, I'm gonna say flippantly very quickly. Like, we imagined all kinds of things. Maybe we could turn it into a, you know, each of the applicants has a representative that raises top to bottom on Ajax. And whoever came in first gets, you know, we could order them that way.
Great idea.
I mean, we had some flippant conversations like that. But I think, more seriously, I think that, you know, it's whatever gets submitted within a month that we determine complete, they go into a hat or, you know, APCHA's sort of lottery drawing system. And we pull out applications fully by chance at the end of that sort of application period.
And I'll finish with a, not rhetorical question for you, but opposed to council of, I'm looking right now at the summary and background of what this demolition allotment system was intended to stop or maintain. And I do wonder if a competitive system could make this process better for these goals that we have set forth as far as greater waste diversion, less impact on the neighborhood, smaller size, and wondering if we could put in a competition system and maybe even like raise the number of demolition permits because of it, because we're getting more of the outcomes we're looking for because there's prioritization towards what we're looking for in the first place from these underlying goals. So, thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
I have comments, no questions.
Sure, absolutely.
Ready for comments?
Thank you. Ben, thank you. Ben, as you know, I respect you a lot and like you a lot. Please don't take anything personally that I'm gonna say here today. I possess one of these demo allotments, one of the 12, through a project that I am invested in and control. I don't say that because I believe that there's a disclosure requirement. I say it because the things that I'm about to say probably hurt me financially, don't benefit me financially. I think that the demo allotment that I have has value and in the way the system is currently structured. So, I want everyone to keep that in mind. I think this was a poorly conceptualized program with deep flaws in the thinking surrounding it. I think it's time to rethink it. Here are some of the reasons why I think that. I think that this ultimately, maybe not in the current environment, but at a time in the future in which we will have far greater demand than supply for demolition allotments, I think it will continue to incentivize incredibly intensive remodels which are more impactful to the community and neighbors than a new build of construction is. This system also limits the mitigation fee income that funds a significant portion of the workforce housing program in our community. Those two factors alone, to me, demonstrate that this is not going to help us achieve meaningful change or impact on what initially was a good intention. It feels now that it's a way to advance personal agendas and community desires, not actually meaningfully affect change in the system. I just don't understand the benefits. We are not mitigating growth. We're trying to limit private property owners' abilities to improve their property. And ultimately, I believe the results are only that those who win one of these development rights become enriched over than those who do not win a development right. I think the rollout of this program was very poorly executed. It was ultimately embarrassing to Aspen. It has resulted in multiple lawsuits that we are all aware of. The issues with the rollout were easily anticipated. I'm just shocked that we're having this conversation now and it wasn't had when it was initially being implemented. I really suggest that we rethink this system. I think most of the items that others have been talking about and considering, including waste diversion, can be built into the land use code without a demolition allotment system. I really just don't get this, and I don't understand how this benefits the community, neighbors, or any of us individually. So, I urge everyone to think about it. Lastly, I urge caution on a competitive system. Any competitive system will favor those with the most resources, whether it's the most green energy solutions on a project, whether it's the most waste diversion. Ultimately, it's whoever has the deepest pockets is gonna be able to do the most if they really want a demolition allotment. It's not going to favor the local who lives in Smuggler Trailer Park who's trying to replace their decrepit house with something new. So, I highly discourage that course of action if we maintain the system. Thank you.
Do you have input on the three? You definitely are not supportive of status quo.
Yep.
And then, there were two alternatives for a lottery or competitive. And are you warning against the competitive and saying that a lottery or?
Yes, thank you for asking. Clearly, first come, first served is broken and was poorly conceptualized from the beginning. Lottery is the only reasonable outcome if we're to maintain the system, in my mind.
And you know what I was thinking about, Ben, is in a lottery, similar to how APCHA does it, you get more chips in the pool for tenure, for years of, in the valley and stuff like that. So, maybe a score, you know, something that is a scored lottery system so that you are, depending on age of house, depending on diversion methodology and all those kind of things. Bill alluded to even green updates that are going in. Perhaps there's kind of a hybrid there, a competitive lottery, if you will. Ward, some thoughts?
Yeah, thank you. I have thoughts on it. First of all, Bill, you shouldn't be shocked that we're having this conversation now because of the failure of the first go-round. So, the fact that we are having this conversation, I think, is a credit to the program. As is, not acceptable. I think that we should have one registered email address for each request and only one application per request. What happened first go-round is an embarrassment and should not continue. The lottery system leads me to the lottery system or a competitive. I think that a competitive system requires more work for staff, but I think it's a better approach. Tori just mentioned some things like extra numbers in the lottery for certain green or some values that are determined to be to the best of the community. And that, in essence, I think, is a weight, weighted lottery system. A lottery system that is described where you have a month, let's say, two weeks or whatever, to put an application in. And then, it is truly bingo ball, calling the number. Each application that is deemed complete, it's a number put on a bingo ball and it's, so that is totally random, I think, is better than no change. But I think that a process, a competitive process, it'll take into consideration such things. And Sam mentioned, I think, some of them, age of existing structure, condition of the existing structure, speculative nature of application. Does the application promote community or profit? I think Bill correctly stated that there is value to an allotment. I think that we have to, and I agree, that we should be very careful about going into a competitive system. I don't agree that the winner of a competitive system is gonna go to the people with the deepest pockets. I think if you set your values properly, that the winner, the people that are gonna get these through a competitive process are those that are meeting most of the values defined by the community, by the process, by the council. So, that it, I, so many times I've seen subjective, the stories. You get sold on the story, and then as soon as people get what they want, the story changes, and it's a shell game. So, I think that the values should be well-established, well-considered, and to the benefit of the community and not as profit as being the primary consideration. So the direct answer to your question is I believe in a competitive system, well designed. Lottery above that and not acceptable is as is.
Thank you, Ward. Any questions or clarification on that?
Yeah, I think so. I understand the comments.
John?
I guess I haven't completely weighed in. Obviously, option number one is not my favorite. I think the lottery system works for me. I like what was suggested about giving priority to homes that belong to people who have been here longer. But I understand the complexities with the competitive option. I think the lottery is the fairest way to go. Thanks.
I think what I heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, I heard a majority suggest that the lottery was either preferable or acceptable. And also that there would be some interest in looking at some tactics within the lottery to try to differentiate projects, differentiate properties to some degree. So I think with that direction, if that's correct, we can come back to you a little bit later with some proposals around that that would give you some choice in how to implement that.
I think that sounds great.
Okay.
I have one more thing. This is to the rest of the council. I'm wondering if six is the right number and if there's any appetite for increasing the number from six to eight or 10.
Yes.
Go ahead, John.
We spent a lot of time getting to that number with our last council. I am not in interest in changing it, frankly. I wanted it lower.
I understand. I'm just seeing if there's not a majority appetite, then there's not. I'm just asking.
Fair enough.
I have an appetite for that.
I'm sorry, Bill, what did you say?
I said, yes, I'm supportive of increasing the number.
And what do you think that appropriate number should be?
I think closer to 10. Sam suggested eight or 10. I think that's more appropriate.
I think six is a good, there's an administrative council review to add to to that, I think, annually. I think over the period of time that we were presented with the number of permits, six was the average. So I, and last year, I think it was 13. And I think that was driving a lot of change in use of the properties. So I support six with retaining the two council reviews.
I'm going to stay there for now. I think when I get back some information from Ben about this direction of a new process, I'll have a little time to think about that. I very much don't know about the actual number. My concern here is about the really volumetrics. You know, if we were doing demos that were 100% reuse, I would have a lot less issue with the number of demo permits. So I think I'm going to learn. I'm going to still consider what you're saying and suggesting, but not at this time. I don't support that.
Yeah, that makes sense. And it's just with the competitive aspect, it might allow for that greater number to make sense. So, fair enough. Thank you.
Thanks.
Tori, maybe we can talk a little. We can do this offline. But reuse of old materials from the 60s and 70s is you have limited opportunities.
Absolutely.
You know, especially with asbestos. So keep that in mind.
And I don't think that we'll get to 100% anytime soon. That's for sure.
Phil, you don't want to reuse the asbestos?
I love asbestos. Use it everywhere. Great insulating material.
I think as a...
That was said as a joke.
Oh, my God.
I love asbestos.
I think as a general comment, I think that we're all in learning mechanisms. We are just getting, you know, seeing the first projects that receive demo allotments come out of our department with, you know, issued building permits. And so I think we're going to have a lot more information sort of on this program as a whole as we get a couple of years away from the policy. But certainly, we're keeping an eye out on it. You know, in this 2023 year, we've received roughly seven applications to date. A couple of those are the kind of longtime local applications that you'll be seeing some requests for sort of coming forward. So more to come and certainly something that we're keeping an eye on these projects as they roll, you know, get to completion or they start to get into the construction process.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Thanks, Ben. Liz, sorry, I didn't write that to you right away. Apologies.
Want to share my screen?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Matthew Gillen, APSHA Executive Director, and we have Liz Axberg from the City of Aspen Housing Policy. Thank you very much for allowing us to present APSHA's Essential Home Repair Pilot Grant Program to you this afternoon for your discussion and comments. Today's meeting is the result of six months of work by APSHA staff and board, including no less than four board meeting discussions. Liz has put in a huge amount of work for us to get to this point. The pilot program is part of APSHA's overall commitment to work towards sustainability for the more than 1,600 owner units under the APSHA umbrella. This grant program is for individual owners, not HOAs, for essential repairs, for essential repairs, not improvements. We've kept the focus on lower income category levels on the basis that these are the income levels that need the most help maintaining their homes. Now, of course, the counterargument to any program that puts public money to support individual owners is, of course, why aren't they doing that themselves? We believe that the overall long-term sustainability of the APSHA program and the benefits to the community transcend benefits to any individual owner. If approved, this pilot program will not, of course, solve the problem of sustainability, nor is it intended to. But it would be the first time public money would be put into these properties and the information gained would give us greater insight into what is needed in the future. And I'll just, we did discuss this with your colleagues over at the county a couple of weeks ago. So we've got some movement on that and I'll turn it over to Liz for the actual presentation.
Great. So again, Liz Axberg, Housing Policy Analyst. So as Matthew said, this program has been in development since December 2022. And in May, the APSHA board decided it was ready to go to council in the BOCC to request funding. And on May 23rd, we met with the BOCC where they approved the program and allocated funding and actually decided to double their contribution to the program. So the reason we're here today is to request funding to fund the pilot program, but also have space for discussion and feedback as well. So the original ask was $100,000 from each entity. And so the county decided to double theirs and wanted to see if Aspen City Council would be interested in doing the same. And it's completely optional and it's up to you all, but it would increase the grants from $5,000 to $10,000 per home. And in this presentation today, I also outlined everything to show it was a double contribution from both entities as well, just so you know. So originally $5,000 and now $10,000 grants. So the plan today is I'm just going to walk through all the different characteristics and outline of the program. And we'll try to save questions and comments for the end. So first, why are we running this program? Matthew kind of alluded to this already. So first, properties are aging. APSHA is one of the oldest housing authorities in Colorado. And this is just investing this money straight back into the inventory. Secondly, there is a mismatch between free market construction repairs and the lower category owners and their incomes and their ability to afford those repairs. And also, it can be difficult in this valley to even find affordable repairs or someone who's willing to work on your home. Especially, we're seeing in a lot of these homes is deferred maintenance over time. And it's not always just from people not investing in their homes, but sometimes not being able to afford it and other things just accumulating over time. And eventually, an owner will buy a house and there'll be all this deferred maintenance built up. And it becomes very difficult to afford within, especially for those category one and two homeowners. And so we're seeing that a lot. We have a lot of qualitative data, but it's pretty surface level, which is why this program would be great for getting some more information about what's actually going on inside the inventory. We're getting this, APSHA started doing home inspection reports upon sale of homes and also Core was doing energy assessments. And actually, Core reached out to us and asked if there was any other types of financial assistance for homeowners in the APSHA inventory to make repairs. So the goals of the program. We have three main goals for this program for the pilot run. So first is it would give us the opportunity to just test how a capital improvement program could function within APSHA. And a pilot program that is grants is an easier way to do this because of less overhead. And it could give us the information about how this would actually run at APSHA down the road, especially if we were to expand into a larger program, for instance, maybe a loan program down the road for owners. Along with this, it would give us a lot of valuable data about what's going on inside the APSHA home inventory, actually. We would get an idea of what category homeowners are most in need, the category of homes that are most in need, the types of repairs most commonly needed, the cost of those repairs on average for owners, and even who's willing to do the repairs up here, too. We'd be able to collect all this data from this pilot run. And so it'd be a learning opportunity for staff to actually get that inside look into the ownership inventory and start building resources, too, for owners, so they actually know the cost of these repairs. And yeah, again, who's going to do them. And lastly, again, this is just a program that would support the longevity and sustainability of APSHA homes, investing this money in the program straight back into APSHA homes. And also, we could see it being a great launching point for owners to make maybe more expensive, but more sustainable repairs as well, which would also be a benefit down the road for the inventory. So now, after I've given some background, I'm going to get into the actual eligibility of repairs and owners and how the program actually functions. So after some discussions with the APSHA board, we decided to limit the program to category one through three owners only. And also, the owners have to be in good standing. They have to be up to date on their HOA dues and taxes. No violations with the APSHA regulations. Each home is only eligible for one grant within the pilot program, so that's one problem. And also, they have to have a fully updated deed restriction as well. And then after some discussion with the APSHA board, too, they wanted to have some type of means testing or skin in the game, say, for owners to be able to receive a grant. So we are going to require a partial requalification for owners to receive a grant. So this would just be looking at their income, not assets. And the reason we're doing this is first because their category might be different than when they originally purchased their home. So say, maybe they purchased their home and it's a category one home. They're a category one owners. Now they make a lot more and they're category four. So that's why we're just going to be partially requalifying. And we're not doing assets just to decrease the barriers to applications as well. Sometimes, especially for lower income people, there's a higher barrier to applying. And it would also just save some of the time in the process as well. It can take owners a while sometimes to get all their proper documentation together for a requalification. And we're also going to be requiring a percent match for the repairs as well. And it's tiered based off their category, so 10, 20, 30%, respectively. Just again, to give some skin in the game, they have to put some sort of funding towards that repair as well. And to give an example, an idea of what this would look like, so category one owner, the repair is $15,000. They're still eligible for the full grant, but they have that minimum $1,500 requirement to pay towards the repair as well. Another example, category two owner, it's a $4,000 repair. So they have to pay for at least 800 of it, but would be eligible for the rest of that funding, $3,200 of assistance. And so the types of repairs that are eligible, it's only essential repairs that are essential for the health and safety of the household. So it's not for all types of home improvements in this program. So we kept the list pretty general just to give wiggle room for the types of repairs we receive. And APSHA staff will be accepting repairs also by that definition of essential repairs, essential for the health and safety of the household. And also, as Matthew said earlier, HOA common area responsibilities will not be eligible for the program. So for example, we can't get several owners from one HOA try to get money for a roof. It has to be for your single family home. That is not supposed to be covered by your HOA dues. This section, we put more emphasis on after meeting with the BOCC. And also, we've been meeting with staff from the Climate Action Office at the city as well, where we found that this program could have great alignment with the Sustainability Action Plan, actually. And so this part of the program isn't fully flushed out yet because we wanted to first get approval from council and BOCC. But we're probably going to have some collaboration with Core and the Climate Action Office to just help owners make the most sustainably feasible repairs possible. Especially, this will align well with future building IQ requirements, other sustainability rollout efforts by the city as well. And we could see it playing out in a few different ways. Maybe Core doing some more energy assessments for owners or making recommendations for what types of repairs can be made as well. So there's a few different ways, I think, Core and the Climate Action Office will be working with us on this. And then also, APSHA board thought it'd be a good idea to have a prioritization process outlined as well. They were worried that we would get a really high amount of applications and more than funding allowed for the program. So if that does happen, we have a prioritization process lined out that APSHA staff will implement in that case. And it's basically just going to be taking, looking at application, giving it one, two, or three, depending on the severity of the repair. And staff will be making that judgment. And so if it's a number one, it means that the house isn't safe to live in. This repair needs to happen immediately. And then to number three, still an essential repair classification, but there's some more time for this repair to happen as well. Next is the grant application process, actually. So we are going to have a two-week application period that will open up and allow owners to submit their applications, make their requalifications. We'll do the prioritization process if needed, select and notify grantees. And from there, the grantees have to notify us of their repair date, the final quote, who's making the repair. And then after completion of the repair, they send us their paid invoices in which we would send them the funding grant allocation. So it'd be coming after they've paid for the repairs themselves. And afterwards, we're also going to do an evaluation. So we will be sending out a questionnaire to owners about the repair, well, also based off the applications as well. But we'll return to BOCC and council with those evaluations as well to give an idea of who needed repairs, what was needed, how much did the repairs cost, just a full program evaluation. And so funding. So again, originally, we were going to ask $100,000 from each entity to provide 40 homes with $5,000 grants. But now we updated the ask to double that contribution from each entity and double the grant amount. And the BOCC wanted to double their contribution because they were just worried $5,000 wasn't enough. And that's why, yeah. So questions, discussion? I'm happy to go back to any slides, too.
Thank you. Questions at this time? Ward?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Are all these determinations to be made administratively by the APSHA staff? And is there an appeal process in case somebody's denied?
We have not built an appeal process at this time and we're trying to keep it as simple as possible to see how it works and what people are asking for. So we do not have an appeal process built in at this time, Ward.
Okay. And a question, if two weeks is enough, if somebody's on vacation, are they going to miss that window? And finally, if the payment is made, the grant money is paid after the repairs are paid for, how does a person fund the... paid for, how does a person fund the repairs?
I mean, that's an excellent point. We went back and forth a lot on that because you're absolutely right, it isn't perfect for the, for the person applying. We, we decided, again, just in interest of a grant program, a pilot program, we wanted to keep it, the administration as light as possible and staff end, and paying in advance and then having to work, to make sure the work was completed, et cetera, and to sufficient quality, we just made the decision that we wanted to keep it as clean as possible internally. And then, you know, if this turns into a different program, we can hopefully make it a bit more user-friendly going forward. But that, but you're absolutely right, it isn't perfect for the person, but then we decided, well, you know, hopefully they are getting some money, so that's good, but we wanted to keep the administration as, as clean as possible and as simple as possible internally.
Yeah, I can appreciate that. For the person trying to fund a repair that's seeking a grant, it's like going to the bank, asking for a loan if you don't need the money for the intended purpose. So it's, how do you, how do you give assurances to the vendor, to the person that's affecting and the repairs, that they are going to be paid if the person doesn't have the funds to do it in the first place?
I mean, that's, yeah, that's another great point, and we'll see if that becomes a problem. And if it's a problem, we'll let you guys know that we tried it, these were some of the problems that came up. For example, you know, working out the payment, but we, you know, we were trying to keep it as simple as possible to, to gain that information, so we're not sure how that'll work and if it'll be successful.
Yeah, it's, it's like chicken or egg, you know?
Right, right, and we, we decided egg.
We hope to, yeah, collect that information. People will reach out to us if they're in that instance, and we'll definitely report back. And then on the note of the two weeks application, that was sort of the in-between spot we found because there is also some concern if that was too long because people need to make this repair right now, too. So we went back and forth on timelines and that was sort of the in-between we landed on. And again, maybe we'll get some great feedback about, hey, I needed some more time to pull that together, or maybe too many people that needed it a lot sooner. But also, hopefully we'll do, well, we will do a good job of letting everyone know well in advance when this window is and hopefully they can repair, prepare for it properly.
Yeah, I'm not a finance guy, but I wonder if a lot of credit to the, to the vendor, that when these conditions are met, that the grant will be funded, would give some level of assurance to somebody looking to, to do these repairs. And my final question was, what effect does this have on the resale of the, of the property? Oh, I have another question after that, too, so, sorry. Is, will this have an effect? Will it escalate the price of the, of the unit at resale?
No, since the, since we are providing the funding, it won't, they, it won't be eligible to go into their capital improvement increase for that, just that part. Whatever part they pay for will go into their capital improvement cap.
So they, they won't be double dipping?
Yeah.
And then the final question that I can think of right now, and I might have an, oh, oh, one more thing, but it's, so it's requalifying for income, current income?
Mm-hmm, yeah, so current pay stubs or...
Yeah, so if you requalify for your current income, you're category four, now you purchase as a three, two, or one, does that mean that you are not eligible for the grant program?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Bill?
One more comment. I'm surprised the BOCC outbid us on this.
They haven't yet.
Rachel got to him.
Thanks, Matthew, thanks, Liz. Ward got one of my questions. Another one is, will this have a taxable income effect on the recipients? And does that then have an impact on their category qualification?
I, I think it would. I'm not, I'm not a tax guy, but I think it would because you're receiving, you know, receiving a financial benefit, but I, it wouldn't have any impact on their, their category after that.
Okay, so I encourage, at the very least, to disclose that very clearly to the recipients that they're going to be receiving a 1099, I suppose, from you, right? That's going to show the income that they received and that they're going to be paying tax on that income. Not everyone might understand that. Is, is there, I, I understand that you're saying that they would not be able to recapture their capital, or the publicly funded portion of their capital investment, but what if they're already over the capital threshold, right? It's 3% per year, right? So let's say they've already spent 10 years' worth and they sell it with, in less than 10 years. There's lots of scenarios here, but i- is there, should we be considering some way where the public recaptures our investment upon the sale of the, or transfer of that unit?
I don't think we'd really thought about that, given, you know, it's a relatively small amount of money. I don't think we'd really thought about that, but, you know, it's a really interesting idea, which we'll keep thinking about.
And I would encourage Phase Two is the great place to understand when we understand need and what kind of the repair costs people are experiencing and how that compares to their, their capital maintenance cap and their various deed restrictions. They, they vary a little bit depending upon the age of the unit. And, and I don't think, I don't think we have right now quite the staffing level we need to administer what you're asking for. We would just need a little bit of time to figure out, how do we build that into Home Truck? So I, I would hate to make any promises to you right now that we know how to do that well.
And, and obviously, it's less of a significant issue on $2,000 than it would be on, you know, a few hundred thousand on an HOA program or something like that, if we did that eventually. Huge commendations on requiring the exchange of the new deed restriction. Great job. I think that's a critical component to this. I, I want to build on what Ward asked about not being able to afford it. I understand the desire not to overburden the staff. I think, given the target audience of category one, two, three, maybe there's an asterisk that says, if you have a critical repair, but you do not have the ability to pay for it, please discuss it with us, or something that leaves it open for a conversation. I, I don't think that opens up the doors for like impartiality or anything, but I, I think that might be self-defeating not to have that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just a quick comment on that. So to both your points about need, the county has a program that if someone's in trouble and, and can't afford something like this, the county can step in and they can, they have, they can fund it immediately. So this is kind of that next step of program. And the other thing in, right, we're asking you all for money, and so I, I say this as lightly as I can, just please remember, the APSHA board has been through this four times, and this is over a number of months where staff went back and redesigned and redesigned and redesigned. So I just encourage you to try not to redesign, because if you think about this as like Congress, because any redesign in the program would require going back then to the APSHA board and then going back to the B O C. Thank you.
Lastly, a sort of a comment, not really a question, but I get the need here. I get the intent here, which is a good intent, but I think we all need to acknowledge this is a Band-Aid. It's not a long-term solution. It treats the symptom of a, of a, not the problem, which is the system is the problem. And I hope to be able to work towards enhancing the system so that we don't have this problem in 50 years and that this isn't a pilot program that becomes a forever program where we're constantly doling out dollars to private property owners, which isn't the way the system should function ultimately. It's really not. And, and hopefully, I, there probably is a way where we can maintain owned APSHA housing, but clearly there's a flaw in that model right now in which owners cannot afford to or do not desire to or are not incentivized to maintain their property appropriately, any or all of those things. So I just want to acknowledge, it's not, this is not a problem solver. This is a temporary Band-Aid and we need to continue to work on the problem. Thanks for all your hard work on this.
Thanks, Bill. John?
I think this has been very well thought out. I know it's a work in progress and I support it completely.
I just want to ask this first because I didn't see it on here. What fund is this money coming from?
We, we have not answered that specifically, Sarah, because we were, we were asking the political question first, so...
I would recommend the 150 Fund, which is your housing fund that, that can be used for these types of purposes. Your other alternative is your fund balance in the general fund. Either case, you'll need to make appropriations.
Thank you. And I suspect this will all be used, but if not all of it is used, we'll be going back to said fund where it comes from?
Certainly, anytime a appropriation is made in any fund and it is not fully executed in that budget year, to comply with Colorado statute, it must go back to that fund balance.
Okay, thank you, good to know. I just saw on the form that it was talking about 40 repairs at $10,000 each, but obviously it could be more than 40, correct? So I'll make sure of that. What else I got? I, I guess this is part of it being a pilot program, but to a certain point, more of a comment of this grant process weeding out willful neglect of these sort of things. People, when you start offering money, there can be a little nefariousness to them. And on the note, Bill reminded me that we are talking about HOA cap reserves and requirements, and I kind of wonder in the ownership system if there should be individual home cap reserves collected each month heading toward, is that something that already exists?
It's not, but it would help address the systemic issue.
Yeah, it's just to avoid that willful neglect and make sure that there's always like money reserved and I hate to say, it's like almost forcing people to be responsible, but I feel like the way we've looked at it on an HOA level is, I think, cap reserve requirements are something that we're potentially heading towards, and I kind of wonder if on an individual homeowner level, we should be heading towards cap reserve requirements.
I'd recommend you see if your APSHA board representatives would like to take that conversation back to the APSHA board as they evaluate the model deed restriction.
Well, I said it, and for your consideration on that. And so hopefully I've been heard on that one. And lastly, what category are the centennial homeowners?
It's mostly three, three, category three, I think.
Okay, so...
Yeah, but it could vary because again, maybe they're category three when they purchase, but might be a different category now.
Okay, well, obviously, that's a bigger thing and a lot of the stuff that they're asking for, I think, goes outside individual homes, but I was just hoping they would be included at least in some of this.
Yeah, and again, anything that the HOA dues are supposed to cover wouldn't be eligible, but there would be, if centennial owners had something within their own unit that was eligible for this program, they could definitely apply.
Okay. I think that's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Could I just circle back for one thing, a follow-up on Bill? And I, I agree that the rewritten, updated deed restriction's important, but for the public, could you tell us what community and program benefit renewing or rewriting the deed restriction has?
It, it is a more modern deed restriction inasmuch it is many of the other deed restrictions over the years have been very complicated and arbitrary, so it's a cleaner deed restriction, which reflects the values which we need right now for APSHA. And, you know, so I, those are the reasons, because it's just code of kind and uniform across the system.
Yeah. I would say it upholds integrity of the program, that APSHA has updated and made this current deed restriction, deed restriction that most properties are under. They uphold the values and the regulations within the APSHA program, which is why it's really important, and also it will prevent any properties from expiring as well.
So with the sale of a unit, the deed restriction is renewed, rewritten, and that in some cases remove or adds the deed restriction into perpetuity?
Correct. That's a much better way to put it, Ward, thank you.
I, I think it's important that the community realizes the benefit of this.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
There are many, that's a big one. I have one more quick question, too. Income requalification, is that in place current income only, an average over the last several years? What's, is it...
It's the most recent pay stubs.
Yeah, W2 from the previous year.
It's a snapshot, not a period of time.
And what if somebody retired last year, made a fortune this year, they're on fixed income?
Then they would not be eligible as written.
Well, they would be eligible, perhaps. Like if, if they had category five income last year, this year they're on fixed income, social security, now they're eligible. Is, you think that's something worth contemplating further?
I mean, we, we made the decision to look at a snapshot and not consider assets. We didn't really want to, that chasing down assets is a lot of work and we didn't want to do that, so we're keeping it just specifically on one, one aspect of the requalification. You know, and there will definitely be a scenario, there'll be, there could be weird scenarios where that creates some, you know, weird results because people live their lives and do things at different times, but that's what we came up, just based on what we had available.
Maybe as, if and as the program evolves into something more permanent, that's something worth considering. Thanks.
Thanks.
I didn't want to miss an opportunity to, to address Sam's comment about willful neglect. I think most of the owners, if not all the owners, want to do their repairs, but category one through three, I don't think they have a lot of disposable income. I don't believe that an older unit deteriorating and not being repaired is a, is a willful neglect. I think it's more a, a product of having to pay full market value for repairs.
I'm excited to see this grow or go, one of the two. I have some questions. I really appreciate all the, the inquiries that council members have made up here. I don't want to jump in now, I think we need a year to learn about this, but I think that there were some good valid points about possible recouping of funds, getting these dollars to the people that need them when they need them and the like. So I think there is a lot of room for growth and improvement here, but I, I'm, I'm happy with what you've brought forward and I thank the APSHA board for the work that they've put in on this, and I'm anxious to see, see what comes of it, and then we'll revisit it.
Dory, are, are you suggesting that we fund for the 200,000 level?
I am, I would support that. We've got nods.
I do as well. I will not be outbid by the county.
There's not an audio recording of me nodding my head in agreement.
I support as well and look forward to a different discussion about which fund it comes out of and which one makes the most sense.
I was just going to ask you now, it's not really a difficult conversation, it's from staff's lens. You have available dollars in your general fund balance, do you have a set aside allocation for opportunities in your 150 affordable housing fund? So just let me know which one it is. The way it comes back to you is in, excuse me, is in fall supplemental. It will come back to you for formal approval, but it will not, that should not, particularly in the 150 fund, delay, cause any type of delay, that your technical approval is not until the end of the year.
Yeah, I, I support the 150 fund, and I think it does, doing these necessary repairs to the units does benefit the whole program.
I also support the 150 fund source. I agree with what Ward just said, that it benefits the program. I think the exchange to the modern deed restrictions has tremendous value to the program and may address some expiring deed restriction concerns, as mentioned, which has real tangible financial value to the community. I, I think a lot needs to be learned during the pilot. I'm glad we're doing this as a pilot first. I think that it needs to be more rigorous if and when we expand it. I think that it needs to be more rigorous if and when we expand it and decide where the impact will be greatest.
Thanks.
Any other questions for direction?
Nope.
I don't think so.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah, next time we'll probably report back to the BLCC and let them know that you are also contributing the same amount of funding and we'll go from there. Great, thank you, everybody.
Two thousand, 200,001 dollars.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Liz. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Matthew.
That'll bring us to our last item on our agenda. Conversation around council goals.
This is really an opportunity for the council to discuss the draft resolution. We've tried to capture the wording used by council members during your retreat and as you set priorities. Additionally, there's a few places we've had clarity to the statement so that there may be some opportunities for measurement where before it was a little more vague. And we're happy to take any feedback you have in hopes that we can get this on the June 20th council agenda. Thank you.
Thanks. Council members, if you've been through it and seen the resolution draft, if you have any comments or questions? Start with you, Sam?
It is what we said it was going to be. I'm good with it.
Okay.
I'm happy to go next, if you want.
Yeah, please, Bill.
Thanks. Mine are almost all semantic related questions. But in section two, affordable housing, the term workforce is not used in there anywhere. And I think that is a critical, critical word that I would appreciate having incorporated somewhere within there. I, I do not believe in an exclusively community-based housing program. I believe that our workforce needs to be prioritized and has to be prioritized for this to be an effective program. So I think that's a critical semantic change that I would like to make.
Can I chime in on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I totally agree. I think it should, I always use workforce housing. We get community from family of the workforce, but part of the qualifications are that you work 1,500 hours a year. So I, you can't, you can't get a, a unit unless you're a working resident of Aspen or Picken County. So yeah, workforce is important to me.
And are you guys asking for the introduction of the word in even the opening paragraph to just capture that?
Man, I'd be satisfied in the, in the opening paragraph, the maintenance of affordable workforce housing. That would be sufficient to me. It's, it's not just affordable housing, it's affordable workforce housing. So I think it's, it's key to make that distinction at least once.
Okay. Support for that? Okay. Down here as well?
Sure.
You'd like the, the usage of that term, Sarah?
I could use clarity as workforce defined as working the 1,500 hours since we have families that don't have individuals that work in them. The reason this is important is understanding what kind of building product we're building or supporting or financing.
Yeah, I think, I'm not proposing a change to the qualification requirements. At this time, I'm just acknowledging those qualification requirements.
So phrasing would be maintenance of affordable and workforce housing?
I would say not the word and, affordable workforce housing.
Yeah, but that's why, that's why I'm suggesting the and because there, it is, it is not just, you know, by the nature of housing, you, you have, you have non-workers living in our housing. So if you want to use the, the kind of language that alludes to that not being the case, that can, that can impact kind of development and eventually could change the nature of it. And I, I know that you have some desire around that, but you want to do it specifically and not just with a broad stroke. So I, I would suggest to add the language and workforce, and I support that.
Or how about? At the end of the sentence, maintenance of affordable housing for our workforce and their families?
I mean, you know, other council members can, can weigh in. I just think that you're, that it's just being a little bit, I don't know, exclusionary. And I know that's the, the intent, but I, I just don't know that it needs to be as such.
How does that, how would that sentence exclude anyone?
Well, like you just said, and their families. So, so what's that mean, Bill? Is that, is that people that are only familial? So people, people cannot live together if they are not family or they can't, you know what I mean? Like, like what's your definition of family? And, and that's what I would try to not put in this. I, I appreciate what you're saying and I think that a nod like, like I'm suggesting of and workforce is, is a good step in that direction. I just don't want to, I, I'm, I'm just careful about the words being too maybe prescriptive or like I said, exclusionary. Because if it is read on its, on its word, then, then it's only for an employee and their family. And that's not everybody's, that's not everybody's situation.
Fair enough. How about qualifying household members?
Perhaps. I, I'll look at it and when we, when it comes back to us.
I think the intent of the program is for workforce and that's why I hate getting into wordsmithing these things. But I think the intent is to provide housing for our workforce. And we get community because the workforce has, has families. So I, you know, defining what a familiar unit, household unit is, to me is more wordsmithing than I feel comfortable doing. But I think the intent is to supply housing for our workforce.
I don't, I don't know if I completely agree with that over the history of APSHA. The intention has been around workforce by qualification, but it has not just been a program that is, that is targeting so that there's available employees. It's a lot more than that.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
And, and, and I don't think, you know, the people that came before me and, and us, I don't think that their one desire was workforce support. There was more to their, their energies there. And I think that's evidenced by the type and the variety of units that we have. Anyway, I, this is, this is a small conversation that's gone on for a long time. You know, we've been talking about this for years and years. I'm not super concerned about utilizing the, the word. I just am concerned about narrowing it so that that is like you're saying, Ward, so that, that the modern connotation for our affordable housing program is pure workforce and all other benefits are ancillary. I, I'm, I'm cautious about that. I'm cautious about that. I don't think it's going to change much of what we're doing on how we do it, but maybe in the future it would. So again, I'm willing to discuss this and, you know, when we get to a resolution and how we want to do that, that's fine.
Well, perhaps staff can think for a moment and write that sentence and come back to us.
You can come back to us as it was.
Yeah, we, we can fix it. We can be whatever we want it to be, so.
John, I think I commented on this too.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, Bill, I understand the, what, what you're trying to say. But I also think that our legal team here is used to writing these so that they keep us out of trouble. And I think this was well-written resolution and covers everything that we talked about in our retreat.
Yeah, I, I'm not afraid of my shadow and getting into trouble in sharing what my goals are for the community. And I certainly will not advocate for any affordable housing development or initiatives that don't prioritize the workforce. That is what our community needs most right now and that's where the deep issues are in our housing program is where it's not supporting the workforce and where you cannot hire employees. So that, that's my personal perspective and I'm not afraid to put that in writing. Secondly, in, in section three, community building, building and health, I would love to add a number, a bullet point F that speaks to developing policies and regulations to incentivize and encourage desirable commercial uses. You know, we talked about that. We don't want more Gucci's and Prada's. We want the types of commercial enterprises that we are missing and that we're, we're, we need in this community that will help foster community building and health. So I think we've talked about that. We talked about it at length during the retreat. I'm excited to work on this one. I think there's an opportunity for us to make a difference here. I think we've missed some of those opportunities recently, but hopefully we can work together on, on finding some that will bring back the types of commercial uses that are missing from our community right now.
That is lightly touched on in the opening sentence there, promote commercial vitality of locally focused businesses. But again, I'm willing to entertain your, your suggestions. So can we maybe get that from you in an email?
Sure.
All right.
Great. Section four, customer-focused government. Again, semantics here in the opening paragraph, but the word customer is missing. Improve customer service. So maybe the second sentence, the city of Aspen will continuously improve services and processes with our customers in mind. I think customer service together has a strong meaning that's missing. This is not as, as critical to me as the housing section. And then maybe another bullet point that specifically talks about regulation to ensure that land use and permitting processes are administered in reasonable timeframes and efficiently for customers. Want me to repeat?
I just want to see this. Again, is that items B and C there or not really?
They touch upon it, but I, I think being explicit in this is important to me. So, you know, this will be accomplished through regulation to ensure land use and permitting processes are administered in a reasonable timeframe, something along those lines. I'm happy to, to make it more polished and put it into an email.
I'm trying to remember our discussion at the retreat. I know that what you're talking about is something that is shared sentiment from some members of council. So, so that's not the issue. I'm just trying to think about how it was, how it relates to what we have now. We do not have a code that sets forth timeline expectations.
That's correct.
So we, are we working towards that or are, or is staff coming back to us with?
This is something I suggested.
Information on that or where are we with that?
My understanding from the retreat is that the council is willing to look at amending the land use code to simplify processes that would allow more quick administrative approvals. There's things that can be done through three different routes. One is the regulatory environment that I just spoke of, so the code itself. The second is the business process within the department, which are things I've been already focused on for the last year and a half. And then the third, the third item is improving the quality of applications coming through the door, including appropriate pre-submitting meetings and not having pre-submittals become application meetings, which is a habit that's happening within our design community with our staff and realizing that that's not an appropriate use of staff time because that is causing the delay, a contributor to the delay of administrative approvals with that level of personalized service from a design team not being fully ready when they come in the door.
I think hitting on all three of those is important. And then the fourth element, which is important, not as important for today because I do believe in Sarah's ability to effect change on this item. But when Sarah's not here and when the rest of us are not here and we are applying for a permit in 20 years to do something in our house and it's taking an unreasonable amount of time, I will regret not trying to do something to ensure that this is administered reasonably. And I don't think that it has been administered reasonably or efficiently in my experience in 13 years of working with permits in Aspen. I, I think it could be done more fairly. It could be done with clearer expectations and understanding. I'm not suggesting permits are issued in 30 days, to be clear. But I'm, I am suggesting that we work towards something and I'm not suggesting policy specifics at this moment. I'm just trying to illustrate what I'm getting at, that we do something that sets clear expectations and makes it a process that can be counted on for the long term.
Okay. Again, I think that we should consider that. And so if we can get it, you know, in a typed version, let council members
Definitely.
Look at it and see how it fits in and we can consider it at the resolution.
Great.
Absolutely.
That's it. Thanks.
All right. Other comments?
Go Nuggets.
I do. And there was something said a week ago at a work session that, that deeply concerned me. I thought about it a lot and I don't know how to bring it up, but it's, it's really a three-part question for you, Bill, because of a comment you made about environment and funding of environmental incentives. And the three-part question is, do you believe in climate, global climate change? Second one is, if yes, is there a role for local government to addressing it? And three, environmental initiatives funding. You, you said that it was irresponsible to fund the, the projects that the previous council had defined. And so I'm looking for clarification from you, Bill, because I lost a night's sleep over being concerned about the comment that funding the environmental initiatives was irresponsible. And if you want to grok on that for a while, fine, but those are questions that I've had in my mind. And I keep thinking that time will put them away, but it, it hasn't. It's really important to me to get an understanding of what your mindset is on that.
Number one, do I believe in global climate change? Yes. Number two, do I think that local governments have a role in addressing that? Yes, to a certain extent, particularly with efforts that are not virtue signaling efforts, which I believe there have been many of, by many, many, many governments, both big and small, focusing on tangible result-driven initiatives makes a lot more sense to me than virtue signaling efforts. And number three, needs a lot of context. This was in specific regard to the composting initiative.
There was a specific reference to the 70-30 split of the STR ordinance and how that 30% should be spent. In my recollection and my belief was that, that you said that all the money should be spent on infrastructure and that it would be irresponsible to spend it on environmental initiatives.
You're right. Hence why context is important. Thank you for clarifying that. I still believe it is irresponsible to not allocate the I still believe it is irresponsible to not allocate the money 100% towards capital infrastructure needs because of how great the needs are there and that those needs outweigh the needs or desires elsewhere. A hypothetical illustration is if we can't get water out of our taps, I don't care how green our water system is. If my lights don't turn on when I flip the switch, I don't care how renewable our energy system is. That's my point.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm not sure what that had to do with the goals draft.
Well, it's, environmental is one of the major control, one of the major considerations. And the last council, the two-year tier setting was, it was one of the top three tiers. And then this one, it is a lens to, to view all of our projects through, all of our initiatives through. So I needed, needed an understanding of, for you stood on environmental incentives because it is specifically pointed out that it's, and we had discussions about it. We, we were, we were at three tiers and we decided that the, the fourth one should be an environmental lens. And I thought there was agreement that we would have that as a, as a lens that all, all projects were viewed through and I needed that clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with the lens, but I would not, from my personal perspective, say that environmental issues are one of the biggest things facing Aspen right now and the, and one of the top things that we should be working on. I respect the desire of the council as a whole and, and go along with that.
Can I chime in just real quick? Just being at that discussion last week, one of the things that I felt was that, you know, the environment is important and environmental initiatives are important, but through discussion, it felt like there was concrete things we could do with infrastructure money and it felt like when it said, what can we do for the environment? It felt like the answer was things and stuff. So that, that's why that was difficult for that conversation in particular, because when it comes to environmental initiatives or anything about like how to spend money, it's a lot easier to sit up here and make the decision that 25% should go towards the environment is very generic. It's a lot easier to know what exactly it's going towards. And when we did infrastructure, it's going towards the armory, it's going towards stormwater, it's going towards a litany of infrastructure projects and that's really how I remember that conversation going and why the environment really did not feel like the best use of money at the time until someone brings up the argument, this is what the money could be used for on the environmental level and this is how it benefits the community.
Thanks, Sam.
Yeah, and I, I agree that I thought that, I felt and I thought I expressed myself that I thought that the armory was a real, there was a real financial need there.
But that'll come back to us in our ordinance or reso.
All right. Bill, you are going to send on some items that you were looking for amendment to the resolution language. We will consider those and move this forward to our next meeting.
Thanks.
All right. Go Nuggets.
Yeah, at this point, we'll present it as the draft was in your packet today for you to be able to vote on the floor for any edits. I don't think we have clarity on specific language on any of the three amendments.
Thank you. All right, we want to say thank you to Grassroots. That is our agenda for this evening. We are back tomorrow, actually at 3:00 PM. Counselors, remember that, 3:00 PM tomorrow.
And council members, just some housekeeping for tomorrow, your 3:00 PM start. You could expect probably two to two and a half hours of presentation from both, between the applicant and the staff planner over the case before we get to the public hearing opening. Also, we'll be making accommodation, the, this building was designed for overflow council viewing, so we will be having that set up tomorrow. We don't do that very often, but at this issue, we're not sure how many people will be here for tomorrow for testimony. All right, thank you.
Thank you.